Okay, I will open the special meeting at 2:08pm. And thank you for your attendance. We might do apologies. Do we have a... Someone want to move on a leave of absence? councillor Guthrie?
I'm happy to move that we accept a leave of absence for councillor Edwards, who's not joining us today.
Do we have a second up? Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Nine zero. Items... Oh, sorry, eight zero. Good point. Thank you. Item 6.1, delegations review Local Government Act 2009. Do we... Does there anything you'd like to say on this one, CEO? It's fairly standard.
Yeah, but we're just changing the service councillor... Oh, it's explained in the report anyway as to why.
Righto. Do we have any questions? Do we have a mover? Councillor McMullin?
I'll move that all powers referred to in the document titled Register of Delegations-Council-to-CEO-Local Government Act 2009. Attached to this report are hereby delegated by council to the chief executive officer of council pursuant to section 257 of the Local Government Act 2009. All prior resolutions delegating the powers under the Local Government Act 2009 to the chief executive officer are repealed.
Okay, do we have a second up? Councillor Taylor, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight zero. Item 7.1.
Six point two.
Seven point two.
Six point two.
Six point two, sorry. Twenty nine and two.
Same again, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, right.
There's time with the regulation.
Item 6.2, delegations review Local Government Regulation 2012. Councillor Hancock.
I move that all powers referred to in the document titled Register of Delegations-Council-to-CEO-Local Government Regulation 2012. Attached to this report are hereby delegated by council to the chief executive officer of council pursuant to section 257 of the Local Government Regulation 2012. All prior resolutions delegating the powers under Local Government Regulation 2012 to the chief executive officer are repealed.
Okay, and do we have a second up? Councillor Burkitt, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight zero.
Sixty four.
Thank you. Item 7.1, Roma Denise Spencer Swimming Pool. I'd like to move the council consider the development of a behaviour policy for the Roma Denise Spencer Pool. Swimming Pool. Roma Denise Spencer Swimming Pool. Do you have a question, councillor? Yeah, please go ahead.
And Lou, there's no officers here, so Madam CEO, I guess to yourself. I would assume that there's already a behaviour policy that the Lisi or Lisa that they have. I would have thought there's already a behaviour policy, is there? That she would abide to.
To tell you off the top of my head, councillor Hancock, we'd have to take that on notice.
Yeah, we might need to know that to know what, you know, so we have a base to go from.
Councillor Hancock, what I'm... I don't believe there's anything in place. I do, we have like maybe behaviour standards, but we don't have a policy. What I'm talking about is if you, and I say a little bit in here, if patrons are poorly behaved or don't listen to direction, that they can be excluded from the facility for a short period and then go to a longer period. Just so, you know, that if it is a... It is something that, you know, we have made Pearl entry free, but but the behaviour issues, and I do believe it's actually sometimes gone back to before the pool charge, but we've got more people using it now, and I believe that I've also noted in here too about looking at having an opportunity to have some lanes for lap swimming. Because I've had feedback that lap swimmers have been disturbed doing their lap business. So this is all about behaviour and it's very much a like stage one, stage two. Like really a process that we would be wanting to see if it's supported to be carried out as an everyday thing, so the...
My question is, is the fact that I think we need to be talking to the operator of the pool because she would have to be the one that would be implementing it.
I think I've just, while we've been talking, just called up a document that I think councillors probably need to see, but it's a legal agreement, so. Mr Mayor, how would you like to handle?
Well, I'm happy to lay this one on the table till later in the meeting to get that document.
It's just an answer to your question. We don't need to move into closed.
You can just add it to the closed agenda.
Yeah.
Just add it to the closed agenda.
Councillor Taylor?
Sorry. Let me just think that through. It's still on the same meeting and it's...
Yes.
Yeah, otherwise we could all get a copy of it and be informed without...
I just have a question while we're...
Please.
Has the Lisi asked for this at all?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, so is the behaviour that you're hearing about, is it because the pool is free?
No, I don't believe at all. I think it's behaviour that perhaps is something that needs some structure around it. And some structure that this is about, you know, providing people do the right thing, they should be allowed to be in the pool. But if not, there's got to be a structure where behaviour is of a high standard in our pools. And the one that I'm hearing about at the moment is Roma. Councillor Burkitt.
Mr Mayor, as I have probably been lucky enough to run a pool years ago and it was probably different standards then, but we had the capabilities of escort, like ejecting people, but a lot of things have changed. There was a lot of things that were in place and whether it's free or they pay a hundred bucks, kids will be naughty. But a lot of things have changed in respects to pools in a big way, so it probably wouldn't hurt, but probably to get some parameters around what you really want, I'd suppose.
And this is what, if this report goes up, this is what it will be. It'll be consoling with obviously the pool operator and then coming back with a structure, so so even the operator of the pool actually has some backing that if this happens, we do this, if this happens, we do this, rather than having to make the call all the time. Councillor Taylor and then councillor McMullin.
I've already spoken.
Right, oh, sorry, councillor Guthrie and then McMullin.
My question is just from a consistency point of view and a proactive point of view. Would it be a consideration to have a policy that applies to all pools? Council pools, rather than just identifying one pool, so that we've got a common set of guidelines?
Can I just suggest that councillors wait and have a look at this in the close?
So you've already moved this lay on the table?
Yeah, we haven't gone to the vote. Did you have a...
I was just going to say that one lot of inappropriate behaviour that was raised with me. I said to take it further to council, I don't know if I did. It was not about children that got in for free. I mean, this person got in for free, but a long-term user of the pool. A prominent person in this town. Staff in tears and abuse and then over subject. I can't say anything more like it'll reveal who the person was.
Okay, so we're going to put to the vote if there's no more questions. All those in favour?
Laying on the table?
Yeah, till later in the meeting. Okay. Righto. Item 7.2, local residents of low-volume rural roads to undertake their own maintenance. I'd like to move the council develop a structured policy allowing for rural residents on low-volume roads to be able to perform their own maintenance, maintenance, provided they have applicable insurances following direction of council offices and council standard. And that a report be brought back to, late report be brought back to the next meeting. As I believe this is urgent to have something in place over the Christmas break.
Mr Mayor, is that not emergency maintenance, just general maintenance?
Well, obviously it's probably more structured if people are going to do it. It's probably going to be emergency maintenance. But it might be that, you know, someone might say, for instance, I'm just happy to whiz down that, you know, a few hundred metres of road and tidy it up so I can get my cattle out.
So, well, there's, I know there's several situations where that's happened, they've done off their own back, which technically could leave themselves wide open for a lot of dramas, but this could change that.
Yeah, this is about a policy, so we obviously look at our risk and we'll get a report back. And, you know, there's risk in everything, but there's also a way to reduce your risk by having insurances, public liability and so forth. And been able to authorize that because we do have a shutdown. But we also can't always get to all roads either, so there's some that have to wait. And I hear that story where they do go out and fix it themselves and it would be far better if we could help and guide that decision with some boundaries around it. Councillor Hancock?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Madam CEO, is it even manageable, achievable to get a report of this substance in less than half a week?
Well, no, it's actually tomorrow that they do the reports and go through the authorisation process. So tomorrow, Friday, ready for the agenda Monday, so we're talking there's been policies that have come back and back and back and back. And then this one is to the next meeting, which is only Wednesday next week, with the agenda closing, having closed already.
Do we have another meeting in December? Is there a special meeting, CEO?
There's only...
Something in the... A tentative one, yeah, 17th.
Sixteen.
A special meeting.
Special meeting, yeah, that's correct.
Would be just maybe something, a quick special meeting needed because of that.
Something to do with some funding.
I'm happy to change that date to the special meeting if they need more time. But we've been, I believe, talking about this for a fair while and I believe we need to act on it.
Well, this is first time it's come to the table.
No, but we've talked in different... No, I've certainly brought it up in council before about this and I believe we need to act on it.
But may never a report to trigger the drafting of a policy for then it to come back for us to make a decision, I expected the next meeting, that's never happened before.
No, but we do have some very big rain events at the moment and I believe this needs to be dealt with quickly to get some structure around it. I'm happy to have a special meeting a bit later if the CEO believes it's unachievable.
Do you think it's achievable to develop a policy in the next day, 24 to 48 hours?
I would be focused on risk because you know that probably residents are doing it now. So how do we reduce that risk rather than, and this is at no cost, so it's not got any procurement issues? I don't believe so. Yeah. Did, would you suggest that I go further back in the date? CEO, because I think there was talk about a special meeting or...
Sixteen.
Tentative on the 16th at nine o'clock.
Sorry?
Oh, that, yeah, yeah.
Was there a definite time for that? Ten o'clock.
Well, I'm happy to change to that date, the 16th.
Could you just adjourn the meeting for a moment?
Sure. I'll just adjourn the meeting for a undisclosed amount of time. Okay, we'll keep going. Two thirty-five. Where are we at? So CEO, with that motion on the date, the one that I've just moved. I can move it back if we need more time.
Michelle, could you just scroll it up so I can see the bottom part, please?
And normally it gets blown up too, Michelle.
Down to the roads one where we were.
Can you blow it up, Michelle, please? Yeah, that's excellent.
So councillors, in talking with the officer, who's primary responsibility, this would would fall to him, and we've just discussed he would work with our new director of engineering, Ken, to collaborate on this, but it is going to take some discussion with the local area directors as well because they all have a stake in this, so it's not a two-second job. And we don't have a draft policy at the moment, so we're going from nothing to a full-blown policy. So what we thought might be better is can we bring a, just have point two, which is bring a report to the to a future meeting, being ideally the 16th of, well, the to a future meeting being the special meeting in December, if one is confirmed. Does it, because there's one up there at the 16th of December, is that the day that you're confident that there will be one?
No, we don't. Yeah, still tentative at this point.
You don't want to hard code that in there in the event that that's changed and then we have a notice.
Next available meeting or what?
To a future meeting, ideally ideally a special meeting in December.
Without the date, so?
Correct.
Without the 16th?
Yep. Special meeting in December for review. And what the officer's said is that we can get that as close as we can, you know, like some meat on the bones. It may not be the perfect policy or might not be the finished product, but it at least invokes some discussion and clarity. Because there's different road types and different implications. It's not, it can't be a one-size-fits-all. And then what you could do is no, I don't need that bit there, to bring a report to a future meeting, ideally being a special meeting in December for council to review, full stop. And then take point one up into the executive summary to provide clarity with what is intended from the mayor's motion. So I believe we should develop a policy for our local... This would allow rural residents on local to be able to perform their own maintenance, provided they have the applicable equipment, insurances, following direction of council offices and to council standard. That the mayor that would probably replace what's there in the first, so just cross that out, yep. And it would start by, the report proposes that a structured policy be developed, allowing... And then, can we see below? Thanks, Michelle. And then, and then it becomes that council bring a report to, it's just all number two. Bring that up.
Yeah, that's got to be in there.
No, no, just leave it as the mayor had it.
The only thing I'd say, right up, since it gives clarity to the report. Perform their own maintenance or emergency maintenance. Because there's different types and I don't want to lock their own maintenance, so you leave that there and then just put and/or emergency maintenance.
Mr Mayor, what do you mean by their own maintenance?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing. Because it's a public road, that's the problem, Mr Mayor. It's not their
It sounds like...
Their own road.
Yeah, well, what I'm actually saying, they're on, like, they're going to be providing it at no charge, so.
Well, you're jumping to the conclusion of the report and the decision.
Want to report on how we can do it. And then obviously get the pros and cons of it and all the rest of it. Officers' recommendation, all the rest of it.
Is it not just to perform maintenance?
Yeah, righto, take that out. Yep, okay. Well, I'll move that council bring a report to a future meeting, ideally being a special meeting in December for council to review. Do we have a second up? Councillor Burkitt, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Seven one if I'm corporate division. Okay, moving on to...
What about the other one? Seven point one, we're laying still on the table.
Yeah, we've got to get some info on that. Which one?
Well, we've got it.
We want to deal with it now?
Well, the only thing, like you said...
Kenza, if you want to...
The contract's not that.
But do you want to go into closed to talk about the contract or not? Does anyone want to do that?
Mentioned before, we've probably said too much already about it.
Just add it to the... Councillor Hancock?
Mr Mayor, I move that we add item 7.1, agenda item 7.1, to the closed agenda. The confidential agenda due to a discussion about contractual matters.
Do we have a second up? Councillor Ladbrook, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight zero. Okay, moving, does anyone want to move into closed?
Can I do a conflict, Mr Mayor?
Please go ahead.
Mr Mayor, can I declare a conflict of interest in C1? Interim Chief Executive Officer position. The declaring counsellor is myself, councillor Julie Guthrie. The person with the interest or the related party and the particulars of the interest is that one of the candidates is the uncle of my son's wife. And whilst this does not make the candidate a related party as defined by the act, it is nevertheless gives rise to at least the perception of a declarable conflict of interest as defined by the act. The type of conflict is declarable and my action will be that although I do although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I do not believe a reasonable person could have a perception of bias, therefore I will choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting as to whether I can remain and participate in the decision-making.
Councillor Taylor?
I'd like to move that it is in the public interest that councillor Guthrie participates and votes on agenda item C1. A reasonable person would trust that the final decision was made in the public interest.
Do we have a second up? Councillor McMullin, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? So that will be six one. If I call for a division. Okay, now righto, do we have someone to move to go into closed?
Do we do the order before we go in or does it matter?
No, in closed it doesn't matter what we deal with. Do we have the wording up there? Councillor Hancock?
I move that in accordance with provisions of section 254 J3 of the Local Government Regulation 2012. A local government may resolve to close the meeting to the public to discuss confidential items that its councils and members consider necessary to close the meeting. Those items are... Oh, it's not on there anymore. Can you go up, go? In accordance with section 254 J5 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, the following table provides the matters to discuss and a view of what is to discuss when the meeting is closed. The agenda item is C1, interim chief executive officer position. And we have moved item 7.1, which is the Roma Denise Spencer Swimming Pool into closed and that's due to contractual matters.
Okay, so do we have a second up? Councillor Taylor, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Eight zero. Righto, we'll keep going with the meeting. Item C1, interim chief executive officer position. Do we have a mover?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to move that council one engage Miss Edwina Marks aligned with the total recruitment package passage as interim CEO officer from 4th of January 2022 until 22nd of December 2022. To do this, engage undertake the contract via pre, for pre-recruitment. For the for the next, for the same period from the 4th of January 2022 until 22nd of December 2022, with the cost to come from GL02701-2094. I'm probably going too fast now.
Yep.
Did you say November or December? Is that eleven and a half, was it?
So councillor McMullin, is it two different things? One is a point and the second one as far as the fees or whatever, it's dealing with that with the GL number. So, Michelle, it locked up, did it? So we might have to go slowly.
But also I didn't realise that the resolution was being changed.
Oh, yeah, no problem. We might have to go slow from...
Oh, yeah, well, you're right.
If you wanted to start again, because I wasn't aware that it was changing.
Okay. Engage Miss Edwina Marks.
Excuse me, is it a point or engage?
So it's councillor McMullin's resolution, isn't it?
No, I was just asking councillor McMullin.
Well, I haven't heard it yet.
Okay, well, I will appoint Miss Edwina Marks aligned with the total recruitment passage as interim CEO.
Hang on, hang on, just, she's not there.
As interim CEO from 4th of January 2022 until until 20... until twenty, oh, you've got the 22nd of December 2022? To engage, when did I say engage?
A point, it says.
Contract.
Can I just ask councillor McMullin? With, with, is your plan, because the advice we had is, um... It wouldn't be three, three, it would actually just be employed through council.
I didn't say anything about pre-recru, pre-recru, pre-recruitment there.
Righto, so it just says undertake a contract.
True.
I never read that out.
You didn't read that out.
No, sorry.
You did, you did, yeah. You did before, the first time.
When you...
Oh, that was my dot point two, that's why, I go too fast with Michelle, I got there. That's dot point two, Michelle, yeah. Oh, you wrote two or not? When I said two, I was meaning dot point two, sorry, yeah. Undertake a contract through procurement for the same period with the funds to be drawn from Zero two, shit, Michelle, sorry, I'm two. Zero two, seven zero one dash two zero nine four three.
That doesn't look right to me. Doesn't look right.
GL02701.
This one, yeah. Could be say drawing from...
Yeah, it's, it's not zero two dot seven nine.
No, this is zero two seven zero one. To be drawn from, I should have said two, Michelle.
Instead of the dash, I think, I believe it probably should be a dot.
I just can't remember what it was, yeah, okay. Three.
Point three.
Point three, sorry, yeah. Authorise the mayor to negotiate the final terms and conditions. Four. If, if the applicant accepts this is number four, Michelle, sorry. If the applicant accepts written con- written confirmation be circulated to all elected members prior to making a public announcement.
Okay, I'm happy to second that.
He's here.
Be drawn, just number two. Just, oh, oh, no, two, that's after two, 2022, two, let's stay there. Two, two on the day.
Yeah, two, two.
After the two, two. Too many toadies in me head.
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, um... Is that your motion there?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
I just believe we need to go into closed for a matter to do with C1. So I move that we go into closed as we have said before. Do we have a second now? Councillor McMullin, any opposition? We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Six two if I call for a division.
I'd like to move, make, move an amendment to my resolution.
That wasn't voted, so that's...
No, we haven't voted on it, so alls I want to do is change, go to dot point one and change some dates, please, Michelle. I'll write it, I want to write it down.
Yep.
That'll be from...
So, Michelle, sorry, councillor McMull, just for ease of your minutes, you need to still have no vote taken. And then underneath, it's the whole motion again with what councillor McMullin is amending it to, to reflect.
I've got that earlier when that actually happened and I've replicated it.
So is that the replication?
This is the...
Okay, right, I just want to change some dates, please.
On the assumption, I'm thinking I could delete this if it wasn't required.
So it's the second of March 2022, please? Until 24th of February 2000 2023. Yeah, I move...
Nothing is suggested changed.
Yeah, just the date, that's all, everything else will be the same. Well, sorry, the GL will probably...
That's still stayed the same one?
Oh, sorry.
I'm just, the GL will still be needed for, won't be the same dollar value, but...
Well, it'll still be needed.
Yeah, that's what I mean, for the, we're still in the same financial year. I've just changed it.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's right, you know, everything else will be right.
Yep.
Righto, do we have a second for that?
You had already. You had already seconded it.
It's not up there, but...
Do you have to move the, move amendment? So I, I've made, I've made the amendment, so that's all right.
Yeah, the mayor has to check with himself a second to see if he's happy with that change.
Yeah, I'm not happy with that.
Not happy with the change, so...
So does anyone else wish to move, uh, second the motion?
I'll move it second.
Any opposition to the motion? Does the move wish to speak to the motion?
I have a question, sorry.
Please go ahead.
Um, it's for you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor McMullin, what is your reasoning to, um, for a short term, for only 12 months, rather than a full-term contract?
Hey, there you are.
What is the reasoning for a 12, or under 12-month contract for an interim, rather than going out to doing a a, a full-time contract for a CEO?
Because if, I believe if we go out to the full-time contract and we don't get the right person, then what do we do? Interim one, you can get rid of them pretty...
The ones we're getting through this again.
That's not the question.
You have probation periods in contracts, of course, three, six months in every contract.
I just, I just asked that question because you weren't here last week and so, and you've moved the motion, um, and it's just, you know, for the cost for the nine months or 12 months, so...
Okay, does the move wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just think...
I've got an amendment.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to move a point five that council make public the cost of engaging pre-recruitment in the recruitment of the interim CEO.
And do we have a second for that?
Well, the... That move's got to agree to it.
No, I don't agree, Mr. Mayor, that's all. Righto.
I'm just getting the wording right first.
I just checked to choose a package of...
That, it'll be that council make public the cost of engaging pre-recruitment in the recruitment of the CEO, of the interim CEO.
Okay, so we've got an amendment, um, that wasn't accepted. Uh, second for that amendment? Um, do we need one of those?
No, oh, for the amendment.
For the amendment?
Yeah, I don't know whether...
The mover doesn't mind it, then it's not accepted and so you seek a second.
Second, yeah, that's right.
For the original, no, no, just for the amendment.
No, for this amendment to make it, uh, the cost engaged in recruitment.
So I can second the amendment?
Yep. Councillor Taylor has. Uh, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it?
I do. I think it's vitally important for the open and transparent decision-making of this council that we include the costings of recruiting an interim CEO. Um, it has been, in the last little while, uh, a, a practice that I just cannot support, that we're simply using local buy as a way to get around, um, uh, sharing with the community the cost of the decisions that council are making. Uh, I think, um, uh, and, and I know that there wasn't one councillor that's now in the chamber that in the election campaign didn't campaign for open and transparent local government. Um, and I think if, if we are going to stand by the commitments that we make in an election, uh, then this particular amendment should be supported and that we have the confidence to share with our community the cost of the decisions that are borne by this council.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak? We'll go to the vote.
I just have a question, just so we know. So we're voting, we're voting on the amendment.
Just the amendment.
And then we'll come back and vote on the resolution.
Correct. Okay, all those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Uh, lost three, five. Okay, if I'm called for a division. Okay, so we've got the motion. Now, does anyone wish to speak for the motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say with all the, um... council decisions to, to, um, go lo, go back to local, change the organisational structure and the decision was made, council decision made to to, not to rehire the original CEO. I think we need to go out to a interim CEO just to get to come in and get, um, everything running in, under the new banner that we, we anticipate.
Righto, does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Taylor?
I'd just like to speak against the motion. To start with, there was four candidates that were pre-recruited, um, without advertising. And then I'm assuming it was revealed that we should have advertised the position of interim CEO for the 12 months or whatever it was, and that went out for four days. Just don't know why we have to have an interim CEO. And the sad thing is, nobody can really tell me why. Once again, the decision was already made, so my input is not needed. Once again, the deal is done. Just don't know why everything has to come to this table, is never done in the right way. Can't believe this is the way it would be done normally. And the people of the Mariner, Mariner deserve better governance. I would have thought that with five new directors, that we could do with somebody from in-house to steady the ship until we do a permanent CEO. But it seems that we don't, we don't do the things that I would assume we should do. Um, I'm not really sure on the package for the new CEO because that was only sort of discussed at 4pm today. Um, don't really know what we're offering them and don't really know if we can afford them. So I won't be voting for this motion.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Ladbrook?
Um, I think that, um, it's good to have an interim CEO. Um, because if they're not performing, um, and I don't think three or six months is enough, you need longer than that. Um, so I think it's very good to get an interim CEO for the 12-month period.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Hancock?
Yeah, I can't support this motion and, um, and my decision is not about the person. It is about the process and it's about the governance of this council. The governance around this decision, in my opinion, is appalling and not in line with responsible decision-making of council. Last week, we were provided a report that already had four names on, on the report before it was advertised. I, I don't understand how we can do that. Um, I don't think that's good governance. And then this council decided that, uh, that they should advertise. So they went out to advertise and they did it for four days. They advertised for four days to choose the CEO and our next leader of this organisation. I would assume that a normal, um, recruitment process would have been for several weeks that you would go out to give the opportunity to the market for them to even know that this is out there. But we advertised for four days. And on that advertisement of four days, we're going to appoint a CEO and the leader of this council. And I just don't agree that that is good governance. I actually, it actually makes me think that it was just a token, it was just a token offer. It was just, it was just something that we had to do or we should have done, but the decision was actually already made and the person had already been chosen um, before it was advertised. I, I just don't think that's good governance. I don't think that's best decision-making for this council. Um, I actually stand by what I said last week that I don't believe that we need, that we needed to go down this process. You say that we're going back to local and we're employing eight, eight directors and, and, and now employing a CEO so we can go back to local. The CEO, in no fault of her own, is not local. She's actually from away. Um, and, and the directors that we've seen appointed so far, they're from away as well. They're not local either. But yet we're trying to convince the community that we're going back to local for the benefit of local and local knowledge. I, I can't see how this is actually going back local. What I can see is that through this process, that there is a huge financial implication to council. To do this process, to, to put in an interim CEO for less than 12 months is a financial cost to the rate payer, which three councils tried to get out in the open today so that the community knows how much this is going to cost us to do a interim CEO. Instead of just going through the correct process and appointing a CEO and the next leader for this organisation. That people that people, um, councillor Ladbrook's just left, Michelle. Um, that people could be excited about the fresh person who you're wanting to lead this organisation. And we could go out to the community and, and actually sell this. But no, we've done a four-day advertising. We're recruiting without interviews, we're recruiting on a piece of paper. A piece of paper. Personally, I have not met this lady.
That is not correct. It is not a piece of paper. I'll just correct that. And you know it's not a piece of paper.
Well, it is a piece of paper in front of me, Mr. Mayor.
It is many, many pieces of paper in a resume.
Yeah, correct. It's, it's on paper base. Okay, I'll refrain, I'll refrain that it is a paper-based resume that we're recruiting on.
Thank you.
That I have not actually, uh, met the, the lady. Um, or that we've actually even spoken to the lady as a council. So for, for me, I cannot actually, um, support this because I just don't think the governance is around it. And so it is actually sad that as a whole council, we couldn't actually go through a really good recruitment process and actually together, as a whole council, appoint the new CEO and leader of this organisation. And for me, I find that extremely, extremely sad.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Burkett?
No, I might take too much everyone's time. I just believe moving forward that we need a clean slate and the coincide with the restructure. We need someone to drive this with fresh eyes. These sentiments not only come from a lot of community members, but also from a lot of employees that have recently moved on from council, so that's why I'll be supporting this.
Okay, does anyone want to speak against the motion? Councillor O'Neill? Councillor O'Neill?
Um, I'm, I'm not supporting uh, the motion. Uh, not because I don't um, uh, think um, that the, the person that councillor McMullin has uh, moved in the re- resolution, um, can't do the job. Um, my issue is around the process of getting to where we are today. Um, uh, just by um, uh, the, the honour of sitting here the longest. Uh, I was involved in the last recruitment of a C E O uh, for Mariner Regional Council. And I can tell you, it was a rigorous process. Um, uh, the mechanisms then um, in terms of the recruitment are a little bit different now, in, in, in the makeup uh, of, of panels, et cetera. Uh, but the ultimate decision uh, rested with council, and I can uh, share with the chamber today that uh, there was significant input by all councillors into the makeup of the position description, that ultimately went out uh, to a- attract our last C E O. Um, and it, it pains me that we are today um, considering appointing uh, the next leader o- of the organisational uh, wing of Mariner Regional Council in a temporary capacity. Um, uh, based on the timeframes that have been uh, moved, uh, it will be one year out from the next local government election where this contract will cease, and a decision will be made then as to, to what to do. Uh, I don't think that gives the stability to this council. Uh, I think we should be going out now and running the rigorous process of attracting a permanent leader to our council. Uh, I don't think that this is the appropriate governance. I don't think that uh, the principles of the act have been followed. Uh, I think, uh, if, uh, if I am right, our community expects all of us to have input into the one person that we as council uh, have the authority to appoint. Uh, I would have liked to have seen us go out to market, I would have liked to have seen an opportunity uh, to uh, um uh, interview uh, the shortlist of candidates uh, which uh, whilst it was offered today, um, was a very short window. Uh, and um, uh, would have, in, in my view, been um, a, not a good use of everyone's time. Uh, and so therefore, I just simply cannot support the resolution uh, as it stands. Uh, I recognise that we need to have a C E O, they are a vital uh, position in any organisational structure. Uh, I think um, a- as it has already been shared by some councillors, that um, there needs to be a clean slate, well, there's an opportunity uh, to appoint a new person into a permanent role. Uh, not fulfilling um, some, um, you know, goal of, of leading our council and our staff for a limited window. I think that's shortsightedness. Uh, I think uh, it, uh, as councillor Hancock has expressed, is sad that there hasn't been an opportunity for a rigorous discussion around this table uh, as to what we want out of our um, uh, leader of the organisational wing. And therefore, I just simply cannot support the resolution as it stands.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak for the motion? Please go ahead, councillor Guthrie.
I'd just like to say that we spent a lot of time drawing up and devising and discussing a position description for the C E O that we adopted in January this year. Was very comprehensive, it's a large document that contains all of the required skills or selection criteria that could be used, et cetera. And I truly believe that having looked at the applications that we've received and going through and look, looking at each of the selection criteria, I think that we are getting the best of both worlds, that we are going to be bringing in somebody that's got very highly credential skills for us as a transition to then the appointment of a full time and a longer term contract for the C E O. I believe there's benefit in having a transition with somebody here who can move us along in the direction we need to go as we move towards operating locally. I think this is the best of both worlds.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak? Does the move wish to sum up?
Mayor, Mister Mayor, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Um, the interim C E O we're referring to is not a per- the permanent position. I still believe we get an interim C E O in here, and then after a few months, things settle down, we can start looking for a permanent C E O, so I don't believe, I believe we're going in the right direction.
Okay, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Six three, uh, five three, if I'm called for a division. Okay, um, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
This one's finished. We close this one.
Well, we haven't finished this meeting.
No, we haven't finished, so we might have.
Sorry.
Are the citizenship stuff now?
Yeah, I've got to go.
Could you just not move this lays on the table until the next council meeting?
Yeah, I move.
Or could, could, could a deputy, could the deputy fill in?
Well, he can, um.
Finish the meeting.
We're going to have some councillors there as well, so that.
Have we, we ever call them or not?
Yeah, let's not. Let's, let's close a meeting at some point, like, there's only one other item from.
Lay this. I was just going to lay it on the table till next week.
This like, this one?
Yeah, it's only one item, so.
No, seven point one.
Yeah.
And seven point two. Yeah, we've got nothing done. But then, I think.
Well, anyway, I'll test it, that we lay, lay this on the table till we dealt with for next week for the special meeting.
Only seven point one. It's just laying on the tables to the next meeting of council.
Okay, la- I move that we lay it on the table to the next meeting of council. All those in favour?
Uh, this, are you saying seven point one and seven point two?
Seven point two's done, isn't it?
The special meeting, whatever's left. All those in favour?
Well, what's all, I go seven point two done, I've got it down, but anyway.
We haven't voted on it.
Well, all, all those in favour of laying.
Of what, though, Mister Mayor?
We vote?
We've got seven point two, I've got it down as voted on.
Oh, but there was another one I called.
Seven one.
Seven point one.
What about the Ricks?
Seven point, no, but seven point two I've got down as final.
So who moved it?
Moved by Tyson, seconded by Burke, I voted seven one, and councillor Taylor was a division, one. Well, that's what I've.
I actually do remember that.
I've got it written in here, seven point one's the only one.
I've already voted that, I've already put the motion, so we've got to test it all.
Motion?
To la- um, deal with it next week at the next council meeting.
Not deal with it, you're laying it on the table.
Laying it on the table to be dealt with ne- at next week's council meeting.
Seven point one.
Just the rest of whatever's left in the meeting. All those in favour? Eight zero. Okay, I'm going to have to leave and go to citizenships.
Are you closing the meeting?
Um, well, we just, okay, I'll close the special meeting at six O two P M.